All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Minnetrista for February 6th. And first, I'd like to remind you all to put your phones on silent in case so that they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone here this evening, as well as later watching on YouTube. Our first order is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? And I'm gonna get to yours, Ms. Lacy, as soon as we get to the consent agenda items, okay? So you don't have to worry, we'll be pulling that item. So, thank you. With that, are there any changes to the agenda? If not, a motion to approve the agenda as presented is in order?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Lacy, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we don't have any special presentations this evening. We do have three items on the... We have three persons to be signed up, and so they're all regarding the CUP for the solar system. So what's gonna happen, kind of let me give you a little bit of a background. What's gonna happen is the solar is on the consent agenda, but councilmember Lacy has asked that it be removed from the consent agenda and opened up for discussion amongst the council. So what I'm going to do right now is allow those that have signed up, or anybody else here that wishes to speak regarding the CUP for the solar system. You will have three minutes. Come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to talk to the council. So we're gonna start with Paul Keller. Mr. Keller?
Three minutes, this brings me back to college. Okay. Paul Keller, 1295 Reserve Boulevard, and your neighbor, as maybe most have said. So, the concern is aesthetics, and the concern is I'm gonna be able to see it in basically every single portion of my first level and the second level wrangler pole. I'll probably see it more than maybe the actual home or itself, or the property or itself. Eleven to eleven feet tall, eleven to eleven and a half feet tall, which is very large. I'd be looking down at it from the main floor. And it's forty-five by fourteen, so this is not small. The... There is a concern about resale, if I would decide to resell it. If something that this gets approved, it stays with, from what I learned last week. I learned a lot last week. It stays with the property for ever, from what I've been told. So, doesn't seem rural to me, doesn't seem aesthetic to me. There is, I understand they are going up, but I think there was one that is going up or has gone up on Bertram. Can't see it, put a volume on. So, we're the only ones that'd be able to see it? No one else would be able to see it? No other person? So, not against the solar system, at all. A six, four to six-foot trees is not going to cover it, not even gonna be close. If they start with a four feet, yeah, I still got seven feet to go. And six isn't gonna cover the forty-five feet. So, I think we need a lot more. My request is to have it completely covered, so we can't see it. But, again, not against the solar system, I'm just trying to understand, you know, where... Can't tell, can't suggest, Mayor Willem Desling coached me last week, coached everybody last week. Can't tell where to put it, it's their property, I totally get it, totally understand that. But again, it's ten acres, this area was picked, and I think I'm the one that's gonna be able to see it.
Okay, thank you. And we got your email?
Was that through email?
Yes, it was. And we have your email. I think we've all read it, so you know that we've done that as well, so... So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And then we have Scott Colesworthy? I believe you're the actual applicant?
I am.
Okay. We may also be asking you a couple questions, maybe possibly during the discussion, okay?
What might be helpful is, do you still have the aerial view of the property or wherever it be? So for people who haven't seen that before, you can get an idea.
And again, I'm gonna give you three minutes this time, so...
Okay, so I'll just...
Just... No, that's fine, he'll bring that up, and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Scott Colesworthy, 1375 Reserve Boulevard.
Thank you.
So just two observations. So one is that the view that Paul's concerned about, the view is 100% over our property. I don't know if that's relevant or not, but it's our property, the entire view. What he says that he would see it more than we would, well, that's not true. It's right in our backyard. We look right at it. We have a different angle to it than he does, but it's just right there. If we were to put a barn there, I think it'd be fair to say that that would be much more disruptive to the view. And then, the question I have is that concerning, let's say if we wanted to put a barn up, and it was co-compliant regarding height and setback, would a CUP be required? Would any of this be required? I would think not, but...
No, if you, you're in the agricultural zoning district, if you meet the setback requirements as an accessory building, you have, I think, a thousand square feet that you could build without a CUP. Just so you know.
All right.
David, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So, any questions, or you want me to point out?
No, that's...
Let me go up, I'm sorry. Let me go up and point.
Sure. So, this is our house here. This is a barn structure. The solar panel, originally we talked about putting it here, like as close to the property as we could. That didn't seem very carefully, so we moved it over here a little bit, so it's like right in here. So we look at it this way, they look at it this way. Certainly they'll be able to see it, but that's where it is. And the view he's talking about, of course, is going like this.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the view of his property, which is this way, and that way.
All right. So, at this time, we'll ask more questions later, and so if you can hold off then again, and we'll probably have some other questions for you later on. And then we also have Mike Kors, is it? On Hidden Creek Boulevard?
Yes.
Okay.
So Mike Kors, 1202 Hidden Creek Boulevard, and mayor. I am the potential contractor on this position.
Okay. We may have questions for you as well?
Certainly.
As we move on, but I'll give you your three minutes now if you would like.
I didn't really have anything prepared.
Okay.
I was just called in by Nick to come in. If you have questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
But as far as, you know, if it is a rural area, I mean, go back history. I mean, farmers have had, you know, windmills up for generation of power, generation of water. So it's still, kind of fits into that scenario there. But, again, it is, you know, it's not, in my mind, an eyesore. You know, it is kind of beauties in the eye of the beholder, I guess, but it is... You know, we keep it as clean and neat as we can. There's not wires hanging, dangling anywhere like that. It is just as clean and neat as we can do it.
Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes the people that have signed up, and so now we will move on to our consent agenda items. And what we will do is we will be removing, I'm trying to find out which one it is.
K.
K, okay. We're gonna be removing item number K for further discussion. That leaves us with A is approve our work session meeting. Are there any other ones the council wishes to remove? All right? So with that, we will be approving consent agenda item A. Approve our work session meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2023. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2023. C is approve our election equipment lease agreement with Hennepin County. D is approve our lease agreement for West Parcel on the farm property, just to the west here. E is approve a letter of support for the Harrison's Bay Association. F is approve a letter of support for a legislatively proposed Highway 7 corridor coalition and request Minnetrista representation. G is a resolution to approve our claims. H is a resolution to approve the riparian view shed setback variance at 6580 South Bay Drive. I is approve the lake shore setback variance at 4792 Crane Island. J is a resolution to approve the lake shore and street side setback at 7035 Halsted Drive. We're skipping K for now, and I is a resolution to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bid for the 2023 overlay projects, city project number 03-23. And M is a resolution to approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation for quotes for the 2023 sanitary sewer replacement project, city project number 04-23. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through M, removal with K? Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. So now we'll go on to the conditional use permit for the ground-mounted solar energy system. Ms. Lacy, you had wanted this removed for discussion. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I read all the letters, and I don't think anyone here has a problem with the solar system going up. It's, that's not the problem. The problem is just kind of, I think, maybe being a good neighbor and providing some coverage, because it is very large, and it is directly in the view of the...
Paul Keller's.
So, I think it's an issue of, what is the word?
Aesthetics?
Screen.
Screen, thank you. I think we just need a little bit more trees. I think you need some more trees. And I don't think five-foot spruces are going to make a dent in this forty-five-foot-long panel. And, no, I don't think it's unattractive, but it's not rural, and if I lived on ten acres, I wouldn't wanna look at a big solar panel system. And I think we're gonna see a lot more of these. I think they're going to be more and more popular, but we need to keep the integrity of this community, and we are a little rural out here. And so, I just maybe like to see the, uh, sorry?
Screening.
Yeah, the screening.
More robust.
I was gonna say the Colesworthies maybe put up, you know, ten trees, or... I mean, I really think it needs to be adequately, you know, screened.
Okay. So, let me just kind of give you a little bit of background from the planning commission meeting. They had a lot of discussion regarding primarily the screening. So first, and then they also had discussion about the location. Just, again, being fairly new on the council, when an application comes in and it meets all of the city's criteria and ordinances, we have no legal right to deny the application. But we can, so, and we as a city can't tell the applicant where to put the solar system, because that's not our job, number one. And number two, of course, we would then be liable. We could be putting ourselves in a very difficult situation. The one thing that we have control over, and the only thing that we really, in this case, because it meets all of the applicable laws and ordinances, is the screening. They talked a lot about the screening, and, you know, they talked about evergreens, of course, and various different kinds of evergreens. Particularly, one type that was discussed was arbovitus. And there's different types of arbovitus, in case, if you know trees. And there's different, there's columnar arbovitus, but then there's also more full, full arbovitus. And it was mentioned at the planning commission meeting, and I've also double-checked on this as well. They do grow faster than some of the other coniferous trees. So that might be something that you could state. I'd be a little bit hesitant to say that they have to plant arbovitus, because it depends on what the nursery has available. So if you say arbovitus is a specific type, and then they go to the nursery and they don't have that type, then what do they do? So I still would leave it a little bit vague and open, just say coniferous trees. And the other thing to keep in mind is that when you plant these trees, you have to give them enough room for them to grow. And so you don't want to plant, so if you were to plant...
Like a wall.
Yeah, if you were to plant ten trees, though, this is only forty-five feet long, and ten trees are going to, actually, they're gonna crowd each other a lot, and in a short period of time, they're gonna start dying out, because they don't have enough room. So it actually would be better, and then you could stagger them.
Stagger them.
You know, you wanna probably stagger them. But again, considering what size they can eventually become, you wanna be careful not to overplant. Having said that, the planning commission felt six might be adequate. Maybe the council can come up with something like eight, so that they can be staggered and they can have room to grow. That might be one consideration. The other consideration is height, but we also need to consider the cost, because we have to be reasonable. And maybe I'll let our attorney weigh in. Is there something that's considered reasonable? Or is this arbitrary, or...
Well, what's the definition of a screen? I mean, because five-foot spruce is what I read, is, and four, or six, five or six is... That's not a screen.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, obviously, reasonable is a very arbitrary word, but you are tasked with coming up with a reasonable condition regarding screening. And I guess what I would say is, you know, reasonable to me, I guess, would not be a ten-foot wall, which would be very costly and probably not very pretty either. But, you know, it's probably not just a couple of bushes. So it's somewhere in between that, and I think maybe, you know, the property owner probably needs to weigh in too about what, you know, the potential costs of this would be. It might get to the point where it's, if you're requiring so much screening, it's, you know, cost prohibitive for him to do the project. And, you know, at that point, I think you are getting it to be, you know, unreasonable condition. However, you know, if he says, you know, just a couple of bushes is too much money, well, that's kind of another thing. So you kind of got away that with, you know, what the potential cost will be, and kind of what, you know, what you're requiring. And it's not a ten-foot wall, and it's not just a couple of bushes, but somewhere in between that, that, you know, that the property owner can actually finance and complete the screening at a reasonable price.
Okay.
But reasonable would be planting trees that you know are going to grow taller than the eleven-foot for screening in the future, versus having them buy twelve-foot trees to start?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think that's definitely a reasonable thing to require. I mean, I don't think you have to say, you know, you have to put in a twelve-foot-tall tree now, because obviously the tree is gonna grow. I mean, obviously, it's not gonna screen it right away, but I think, you know, if you can kind of show that within a few years, the tree will screen it, then, you know, that's one thing. But if you, yeah, if he's planting things that you know definitely will not grow tall enough to screen it, then, you know, that's something you shouldn't allow.
In other words, you don't wanna plant a pygmy barberry or something like that. Yeah. So, do we wanna ask the applicant any, I mean, but go ahead, Mr. Vickery?
Madam Mayor, I was on the planning commission when we first started talking about this ground-based solar raise, and we did view them as quite different from, say, a barn or something like that. We were very concerned about the neighbor's view of these things. And I think that's why I saw a lot of back and forth in the planning commission meeting on that. So, I really would wanna see, you know, more than just the six trees, as councilmember Lacy mentioned. I'd also like to know, and maybe this will be a time for the applicant to talk, but it seems like you and Mr. Keller are reasonable people. Have you talked to each other since the planning commission meeting? Perhaps you can work out some solution between the two of you?
So, Mr. Colesworthy, do you wanna come forward?
Sure.
Colesworth, is it? Yeah.
Colesworthy's on the council.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just so you know, there are evergreen trees here, so if that's not a complete screen though, it wouldn't be satisfactory, because there's an open area over here, so mostly focused on putting some trees here in the open area. So, I mean, we're really open to, you know, whatever they want for trees, but not, you know, we don't wanna spend excess money, so the idea of them calling to ten, twelve feet, doing the sure for the time, that'd be great. Is five, is six, is eight, I don't know. You know, people out there looking, you know, but it doesn't make the project untenable, certainly.
Okay. The other thing too, I was gonna suggest for screening, hold on just a second, Mr. Keller, for screening is, I know you think, people always think deciduous tree or coniferous trees are the best, but also, in the interim, you could plant some bushes along the property line. It will give you some screening as well, and less, and I'm not saying not planting the coniferous trees, but planting coniferous trees, but in the interim, if you planted some bushes, lilac bushes grow like weeds, and they would give you a lot of screening in the interim as well. So that might just be something to consider, but...
I don't think those grow high enough to be really...
Oh, yeah. Mine are like fourteen feet tall.
Well, that would take a while. And he's, the neighbor is looking kind of down at this. I think there's, I think it's an easy solution, and you both seem so reasonable. And, you know, I know that if something was planted right in your view, you'd probably not wanna look at it either. So I think if you can come up with a reasonable amount of trees, maybe eight or ten trees that are bushy, you can stagger them, not just make a wall, I think your neighbor would be happy. And happy neighbors are nice.
Mr. Keller, real quick, have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I did, like, so this is just one picture. I put this in there. It's a horrible picture.
I'm gonna bring up that picture.
Also, if you'd actually come up and see it, you could if you wanted to.
And the other one? I gave these to...
What is that?
These are solar panels, similar to what Mr. Colesworthy is gonna do. The backside is what you would be looking at without any screening. Unfortunately, I had to take it from this angle, because there's trees behind here. This was taken seventy-five feet from the first one. Your house is over two hundred feet away. I'm just, I just wanna give the council because some idea as to what this looks like. And this is taken seventy-five feet away, and your house is over two hundred feet away.
The house is two...
Yes, but...
If I'm in my yard...
Well, okay, but, but your comment is, was, that you could go to the edge of your property and you could see it. I mean, so there has to be some kind of...
I can see the edge of the property, I can see it from every single room.
I understand that. I'm just saying, this is kind of, council, this is kind of what it will...
That is the size of something.
Yes, what it will, only not two, one, and it won't be that long.
I can just make a comment on the one on Bertram that was just approved, and I think that's in already.
This is the one on Bertram?
It is?
Yes.
Okay. So that's behind the red barn? So if you go back to my picture, if you go back to the larger...
Right, yep.
So...
I was, Mr. Keller, I was using that as an example as to what it looks like from behind?
Yes.
Not the location and not that application. Right. And I believe you did make comments on that one as well?
Yeah, in the latter, but not here.
Yes, right. So, I guess the question is...
A barn is more rural than this?
So you would prefer a barn?
Sure.
Oh, okay, all right.
Or a windmill? But at the end of the day, it's, if we're talking about cost, solar energy systems are built to save money, so maybe the turnout investment lasts a little bit longer if the trees are purchased, more trees are purchased. I don't know that for a fact. I haven't looked at the cost summary on it. But there is also a potential cost of, you know, lack of resale, right? I don't think that property goes up.
Mr. Keller, we're not gonna argue that here this evening, because I don't think any of us are real estate agents that could argue for or against whether or not it would devalue anyone's property. So I guess the question to you right now, and this is a council discussion, so we're asking you a question right now regarding the screening. And I think the question Ms. Lacy is looking for, or an answer is, you know, around eight trees, eight feet tall, is that something you can live with, is what her question is?
About ten.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. With that, council, any other questions or comments or concerns?
I mean, I've looked at the cost of trees, and I just looked up technia arbovita. I picked that because they're running down between my home and my neighbors, and they grew extremely well. They thrived in Minnesota, and I know they weren't terribly expensive. They are actually in a wall, but I think if you staggered, you know, what, how do you feel about ten eight-foot trees?
Sure.
Thank you. I mean, and, you know, I don't think you're gonna get a wall, but, you know...
I think with ten trees, Claudia, you're gonna get more than a wall.
I mean, you're not gonna get a wall immediately, but I think it's, I think it can be properly disguised, and...
Ten foot, is that what we're...
Yeah, ten, bushy, you know, you wanna be a good neighbor, you wanna hide it the best you can for your neighbors, so maybe look for that kind of tree.
I will say...
I think it's pretty cool looking at myself.
Yeah, but it's not rural, you know. It's not ugly. I mean, it's not ugly at all, but it's not... If I was moving out to the country on ten acres, I wouldn't wanna look at solar panels.
So, Ms. Refkin?
We do have to make sure, like, we can say eight feet, he has to be able to find them? So if he can only find seven-foot ones, then you're gonna have to be realistic about what he can buy. So please don't take a tape measure and go, they're only seven feet tall.
No, I won't. But, you know, a lot of the trees that you buy say rapid-growing, you know. So, you know, I think that's, you sound like you're willing to screen it.
And Paul, we're happy to walk out there with you, so if you wanna walk out there with us and say, you know, here's some, there's some hay, just go here, from here.
That'd be great.
All right.
Good neighbors.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. I think everyone's happy now, so hopefully. So then with that, is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the solar? I have to get back to that.
So moved.
With, with...
With the condition.
With the condition of...
With the condition.
The screening is in, the screening will be ten eight-foot...
Approximately.
Approximately, approximately eight-foot trees. Maybe arbovita will kind of...
Coniferous.
Coniferous trees. So, with that, is, you made that motion, Ms. Lacy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Vickery made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Good luck.
Good luck.
And be nice to each other. All right.
And let us know how much money you save on those solar panels.
All right.
It's, you know, it's not like a Scott, it's not Scott here, he has a gun. But it's more about doing something for the one who's...
I tell you what, how about we take that subject up out in the hallway? And/or you can email. No, we, we, so, thank you. We just have a couple more business items, and then it will be over, and you are welcome to state. So next is our business items, and it's approve our conditional offer of employment for Joshua Brown as a police officer. I'll hand that over to Ms. Paul Foose.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight we are asking for approval of a conditional offer of employment for Josh Brown to hopefully fill our vacancy due to a retirement in October. As some of you may know, Josh worked for Minnetrista from 2015 to 2023. As some of you may know, Josh worked for Minutrista from 2015 to 2021. He left because the work schedule of the department at the time was not conducive to his family life. Since then, the police department have adjusted the patrol officer schedule, which allows for more weekends off, which Josh is interested in returning. In addition to his experience with our department, he has experience as a field training officer, instructor, investigator, and community engagement officer. Due to his experience within our department and other training he brings, we recommend entering him in at level five of the union pay schedule at $41.83 per hour. Also, due to the difficulty in finding quality candidates and hiring police officers, the personnel committee recommends offering a signing incentive of $3,000, have to be paid upon successfully completing six months, and then the other half at the year mark. So should he successfully complete the pre-employment psychological exam and physical evaluation, we expect him to join our department in early March. So we're just asking for approval of the conditional offer.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Foose. Any questions? I know this has been vacant since last fall, like you said, so it's, it's a very difficult position currently to fill. And I know a lot of other cities are having problems filling their police positions. So if we can get Mr. Brown on board, that would be absolutely great. Would kind of fill out our ranks so until, for further notice, until further need. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Any further questions? Very none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for oh. Next, we'll move on to our water infrastructure bonding bill update. Mr. Kruger.
Krueger.
Krueger. There's a, no, this is serious. There was a, there's a writer, a Minnesota writer, and he was actually in Minnetonka over the weekend. And, and his name is William Kent Kruger. And so, anyhow, sorry about that.
It's all right. It happens. Thank you. So tonight, I'm just going to provide a little update about the, the bonding bill request process and kind of give an update about what's going on right now in the legislature and kind of what we can look to expect. And then talk about, a little bit about costs too with, with some of this. So the, the 2023 session is, is occurring right now. As you've likely seen, there's some bonding requests out there that are being evaluated. Our neighbors to the east mound have one out there. Those essentially were requests that were submitted in 2021 for 2022 consideration. 2022 never, there was no bonding bill. That's the typical year. The Minnesota Management and Budget is the group that kind of facilitates the bonding bill process. They have yet to update their website about the 2023, 2024 process, the timelines. But looking, looking at that website and kind of extrapolating what it'll be, there will likely be a, a submittal deadline sometime in mid-June, which may line up pretty well with the, the model, the water model that AE2S is doing right now. So tying this site kind of all together is, well, what's this going to cost for us to do something? I think the cost will be fairly minimal, and we'll be able to actually use some of the, the tasks that we've already authorized AE2S to do to get us enough information so that we can submit. We have until October then to kind of refine and do final edits. So I think between June and October, I think we'll get a lot more information about, you know, where our water treatment plant could go, where the wells could go, and then be able to get that in line for submittal, final submittal this year, and then hopefully consideration in 2024 for the 2024 bonding year. If that's in, in fact, the way it's going to shake out as it hasn't been defined yet. So I think we'll be ready. I think that's kind of the, the gist of the memo in this update is we'll be ready, we'll be able to submit if that is indeed the timeline, and the cost to do so will be very minimal. If there will be a cost that's associated with this, you'll see another task order brought forward from AE2S. But I think that we'll be able to get a lot of the information that's required just to submit for this. So we'll be following what happens with our neighbors to the east and mound as far as, you know, once this legislative session closes out, if they end up getting a water treatment plant and some other water infrastructure that they're requesting. But, and we'll use, utilize them as a resource to, to see what works and what doesn't, if that's the case. So I just wanted to provide that update, and we will proceed. There is another re-request process starting right now for PFA as well. We'll likely submit again for, for PFA funding for a water treatment plant. See if there's some ways that we can maneuver that to see if we can possibly get that approved and scored high enough to be able to be funded. That's, the PFA is kind of the gatekeeper for the bonding bill process, and, and I think they take into consideration, if you've applied for PFA, the Public Facilities Authority, IUP, and then the PUP, the Preferred Project List, or PPL, Preferred Project List, a lot of acronyms. But the feedback, just so everybody's aware, the feedback that we received from our last application period is that the wells are likely to score high enough if it is funded. That's another thing. PFA hasn't been funded on the state side yet for 2022 because it just wasn't taken, taken up last year. So that'll likely pass this year, and then we'll be able to kind of go through that process. So a lot of things kind of got delayed, I think, in 2022, and they'll be kind of get back on track a little bit in 2023. And the real question will be if they stick to the, the normal biennium process, biennium budget process that they've kind of historically used for bonding. So wanted to provide that update, entertain any questions you might have, and, and go from there.
Questions? If we apply for the PFA, though, for the wells and treatment plant, should they give us that? Then how does that position us? Or doesn't that then position us lower or rank us lower for the bonding?
I don't, I don't believe so. I think what that'll do is it'll indicate that there's a need for that in our community. That's generally what that, what that'll mean. So I don't think it'll position us worse if we, if we get PFA authorization. I think that's a good thing.
Because the PFA, so I believe we apply for the PFA like in May or March or something like that?
It's similar. Like I believe June is the submittal.
So would we be doing that this year?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right. Yeah, I would do that again for the water treatment plant.
Right.
Because the, the previous one was, was scored at not enough points.
Well, and we should figure out how we can indicate that we need this for, I mean, that the water treatment plant is needed for water safety and quality versus, because I mean, look at mound and their water that they have, and they don't have a treatment plant for it. So we don't want to go back there. So somehow if we can make that clear, that this isn't just a, how you say, we, you know, frills, luxury item, that this is really necessary?
Yep. And, and if, yeah, just so everybody's aware, the PFA, if we are approved there, likely all that'll mean is that we can use the, the state of Minnesota's AAA bond rating to get preferred interest rates. You know, our, our bond rating is AA plus. We're pretty close to AAA, so to save us, I don't know, quarter, quarter, half percent.
Quarter to half, maybe?
It just depends on, I mean.
Depends on what the state gets.
Yeah.
Yeah. It depends. I mean, the last time around, it saved us a lot, a percent or a percent and a half because it was, it was 1% loan versus market would have been two, two and a half or whatever it would have been.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So it doesn't look good for this year. But next year, we'll be ready for next year, right?
We, we definitely will. We'll, we'll definitely be submitting an application, and we'll get some feedback likely from MMB and, and others on that, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Keep us posted. So that concludes our business items. We don't need to take any action on that. The administrative items, staff reports, any staff reports?
I do need someone for the February 27th.
I, I will be there. Because I offered up that we're going to do a work session for the, particularly the new planning commissioners at 5:15. And so it'll kind of be a Planning Commission 101 and a, and then, and then at 7 o'clock, the regular meeting. And I said that we bring pizza. Okay, all right. So I know I kind of made a few promises, but.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I know, I know. I, I used my executive power. All right. Any other staff reports? So with that, then, council reports. We'll start with Ms. Refkin.
Jasper and I attended the mound fire meeting on January 26. It was definitely more of a recap meeting since the mound's new mayor was there, along with mound's new council member, and then the new city administrator from Shorewood. We walked around the bay, saw the vehicles, saw the tanker that Minutrista previously bought. We did find out that they keep it wet, so when it is called, it is ready to go. In 2022, the total calls were 723, and 28 of those were mutual aids. Duty-only calls were 41 of the 337 first response calls. So the first response calls, the duty officer goes to first, 41 of those only he had to be at. Total hours for 2022 were 11,457 with mutual aid bringing in or using 698 of them. Duty officer hours were 57. Of these 723 calls, 484 were rescue calls, which is 67%, and 239 were the fire calls. Minutrista had 106 of the 723 calls for 1,699 hours.
And the fire calls aren't all for fire. There might be other things that they're called for, but they're categorized.
239 fires.
Yeah, right. That's good.
They differentiate rescue for the lift assists and people not being able to get off the floor and stuff like that. Those are the rescue calls. They currently have 39 firefighters with two advocates on file.
Oh, that's good.
Mm-hmm. Yes, he's very happy with the numbers. Mutual aid is not on that many calls, and the firefighters all like doing that. They have three mutual aid contracts. Hennepin County, the Lakes Region, and Minnesota statewide one, all three contracts operate the same and all is based with the same language. Michael Jobs, Jabs, was mound firefighter of the year for 2022. The fish fry will be June 3. And, yeah, the meetings are from 8 to 10 in the morning on Thursday still this year.
Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Any questions?
Very thorough. Thank you very much. All right, good job.
Well, I'll be attending my first Panier Sarah Creek Watershed meeting on February 16th, so I'll have a report after that.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Claudia, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I have some meetings coming up. Northwest League, and we'll be meeting the brand-new Hennepin County sheriff. So that'll be interesting. And, and then there's next, next week, there's the DTF, the Drug Task Force luncheon. I know you were all invited. If you haven't, can, is it too late to RSVP if anybody, if any other council member wants to join?
Madam Mayor, typically, it's just the mayor and city administrator from each city.
You're not invited. Sorry.
Due to limited space.
Okay.
But if someone really wants to go, I'm sure we can make a, make space.
Not a quorum.
I will, no, there won't be a quorum, but I, I plan on attending, so I'll be there for sure.